President, Board of Trustees to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Rassich.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presidential comments?
I have none this evening.
Trustees' comments?
I would just like to wish our residents and our staff and our associates a blessed, safe, and restful Christmas. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? If not, this will be the time for public comments on items not on the agenda, not to exceed three to five minutes per topic. There are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on December 1st, bills paid and bills payroll reports for December 15th, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for November, ordinance number 3193, reducing the number of Class F liquor licenses to 13 and the Class K liquor licenses to 15 to reflect the closing of Wild West BBQ and the Shrimp Barn and Grill.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 Fast Cat 5K-10K Run. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2015 Fast Cat 5K-10K Run to be held on Saturday, April 4th, 2015 at 8:00 a.m.
That is my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a comment. I'm very pleased that there will be no road closures for the event.
No.
Not true.
That's only for the kid race.
There will be intermittent closures. The kids' race will not entail any, but during the adult race, there will be intermittent closures for that period.
And they're on the circuit twice, so.
That's correct, yes.
I have a question, though, the third one talks about barricades. Apparently what was used last year was not quite adequate on 248th. The stuff that we bought last year for the parades solve that problem?
No, what we bought was crowd-controlled barricades. What they're talking about in the staff report is actual traffic barricades. As you're aware, 248th is a wider street out in that location, and we had smaller barricades, and unfortunately, cars were able to drive around them. So we've worked with Public Works for this year's event. We're going to have larger actual traffic barricades out there to keep the traffic from flowing.
Thank you.
One of the other things that I observed during that chief was that some of the folks that entered onto the course were parents that had dropped off their high school kids to actually run in the race, and then they left through the parking lot onto the run course.
That's correct. Those are issues that our staff, along with the race organizers, have worked on in the last year.
That's a well-received race. It's good that we can do it. They need to keep perfecting as best we can.
Absolutely.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have one comment. It said, "Last year's race cost the village $1,261.83, and we will reimburse $800, which leaves a deficit approximately of $461." Are we going to continue to subsidize races?
I personally would recommend doing so. I think it's in the benefit of the community as a whole to have these events, and I'd like to see us support it in an nominal way. I think $400 fits in an nominal category, in my opinion.
And if I could just clarify that number. That number's the total cost that would be to the village. It's the cost of actually paying our community service officers that are out there, but also the cost of our emergency management folks who, as you're aware, are volunteers. So that is not an actual cost that's being paid, per se. It's an estimated cost of what it would cost the village. So the number, the amount that they're paying the village is covering all our financial costs as far as community service salaries, but then there's also the money left over as actual donation to Pima to purchase emergency response equipment to cover their participation out there.
And I'm glad you had that explanation, because in the future, someone will say, "Well," not knowing the particulars and knowing that specific answer that you just gave, they say, "Well, you subsidized someone else's race. Why don't you do ours?" But your explanation was great. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to approve the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2015 Fast Cat 5K-10K Run to be held on Saturday, April 4th, 2015 at 8:00 a.m. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Route 30 TIF designation and redevelopment strategy. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to reconsider.
I'd like to make that motion to reconsider.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reconsider. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on December 1st, bills paid and bills payroll reports for December 15th, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for November, ordinance number 3193, reducing the number of Class F liquor licenses to 13 and the Class K liquor licenses to 15 to reflect the closing of Wild West BBQ and the Shrimp Barn and Grill.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through D under the consent agenda. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2015 Fast Cat 5K-10K Run. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2015 Fast Cat 5K-10K Run to be held on Saturday, April 4th, 2015 at 8:00 a.m.
That is my motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a comment. I'm very pleased that there will be no road closures for the event.
No.
Not true.
That's only for the kid race.
There will be intermittent closures. The kids' race will not entail any, but during the adult race, there will be intermittent closures for that period.
And they're on the circuit twice, so.
That's correct, yes.
I have a question, though, the third one talks about barricades. Apparently what was used last year was not quite adequate on 248th. The stuff that we bought last year for the parades solve that problem?
No, what we bought was crowd-controlled barricades. What they're talking about in the staff report is actual traffic barricades. As you're aware, 248th is a wider street out in that location, and we had smaller barricades, and unfortunately, cars were able to drive around them. So we've worked with Public Works for this year's event. We're going to have larger actual traffic barricades out there to keep the traffic from flowing.
Thank you.
One of the other things that I observed during that chief was that some of the folks that entered onto the course were parents that had dropped off their high school kids to actually run in the race, and then they left through the parking lot onto the run course.
That's correct. Those are issues that our staff, along with the race organizers, have worked on in the last year.
That's a well-received race. It's good that we can do it. They need to keep perfecting as best we can.
Absolutely.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I have one comment. It said, "Last year's race cost the village $1,261.83, and we will reimburse $800, which leaves a deficit approximately of $461." Are we going to continue to subsidize races?
I personally would recommend doing so. I think it's in the benefit of the community as a whole to have these events, and I'd like to see us support it in an nominal way. I think $400 fits in an nominal category, in my opinion.
And if I could just clarify that number. That number's the total cost that would be to the village. It's the cost of actually paying our community service officers that are out there, but also the cost of our emergency management folks who, as you're aware, are volunteers. So that is not an actual cost that's being paid, per se. It's an estimated cost of what it would cost the village. So the number, the amount that they're paying the village is covering all our financial costs as far as community service salaries, but then there's also the money left over as actual donation to Pima to purchase emergency response equipment to cover their participation out there.
And I'm glad you had that explanation, because in the future, someone will say, "Well," not knowing the particulars and knowing that specific answer that you just gave, they say, "Well, you subsidized someone else's race. Why don't you do ours?" But your explanation was great. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to approve the road closures as identified in the staff report for the 2015 Fast Cat 5K-10K Run to be held on Saturday, April 4th, 2015 at 8:00 a.m. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Route 30 TIF designation and redevelopment strategy. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to reconsider.
I'd like to make that motion to reconsider.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to reconsider. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
No.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute a contract with SB Freedman Development Advisors to complete a TIF eligibility study and RPA plan and a redevelopment strategy for the Route 30 Renwick to Spangler Corridor in the amount of $78,200.
That is my motion.
Second.
That motion was made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Just to comment, there's extensive discussion last time, and I thought it was very, the questions were asked and responses were excellent. So I think it's, the conclusion I had at the last meeting was that it'd be well worth pursuing. It's something which is important for our developmental future, and I'd like to see us move ahead with it, because there's a chance it could make a real difference down that corridor.
I'd also like to comment that I think this is important to the development of the community. We have a key area along Route 30 from I-55 back into town that's got highway access. We've got open parcels of land. We've got areas that just need improvement all the way around, and I think we are sitting on an area that's got great potential for the citizens to benefit from this, whether it's the businesses that are there, the tax advantages that are there, all the other things that come with development of that area. That is one of our key locations, our key direct access to highways, and that is why I'm supporting this.
I do want to thank you all for the opportunity for your reconsideration on this matter. Fran Root is here from Freedman, if you have any further questions. Also, just to reiterate, before we brought this forward to the board for consideration, I met with the superintendent of schools and also with a number of the other taxing jurisdictions that are impacted by the creation of a TIF, and there is general agreement that this is an area where a TIF would make very good sense, and there is strong support for the project to go forward. As we discussed, it isn't a full capture. That's something that will be studied by SB Freedman, but the understanding is that a portion of those funds that get captured will be returned to the taxing body throughout the life of the TIF, so that there is still some capture going off to the other taxing jurisdictions.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to authorize the village administrator to execute a contract with SB Freedman Development amount of $78,200. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
No.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Adventist Healthcare Sign Variance. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt the findings of fact of the zoning board of appeals as the findings of fact of the board of trustees, and furthermore, to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval for a sign variance to permit a ground monument sign of up to 15 feet in height and 64 square feet in sign area at 15728 South Route 59.
Motion?
Motion.
Yeah, go ahead. You're ready.
Well.
Motion and then discussion. If no motion, then we'll move on.
Well, the issue I have, and I may make the motion in a minute, but I've driven by there a number of times, and one of the justifications is that this Route 59 was raised five feet. Well, it's not raised five feet in that particular area. It's raised probably a foot, and a 15-foot sign is up to 15. If they went up to 13 or up to 12, I'd have no problem with it. Up to 15, I think, is too high. On the other hand, I do support the idea of the bigger sign. They do need better visibility for that particular organization, and I think the 64-square-foot sign would be nice, but I just thought, I'd prefer it not to be that high. So if you want to make a motion, I'd make a motion to cap it at 13 feet, up to 13 feet, and with a 64-square-foot sign.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, yeah.
13 feet in height?
Is there any comments made by Stan? Michael?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there has been precedent for us approving or supporting larger signs along Route 59 because of the modifications basically made to Route 59, but your point is fair. Again, it's also identified because there are several buildings. As you know, it's a campus, and there has been some, I guess, challenges from their clientele as it relates to finding the particular doctors there. They just generally want a little higher visibility, and therefore, they have requested a larger sign than what we've historically supported or approved. But there is precedent for, as you know, there are several retail centers along Route 59 which have 15-foot signs. There's actually a case before the planning commission tomorrow with another applicant requesting a 15-foot sign. So this is something that's because.
The ones we approved of the board before are in a hole.
Right.
The 15 feet comes up to about 10 feet.
Correct.
This one's not in the same kind of hole.
You're correct. As you get further south.
I like the idea of a bigger sign, because I do think they need more visibility, because you can go right by them without really noticing them. So I support the bigger sign. I just don't want to see a flag that high. I just shrink it. That's my opinion. I don't know if somebody else wants to submit a different motion or whatever.
Michael, what is typically the setback of a sign from the road?
We require a minimum of five. They're usually more than that. Obviously, our biggest issue is safety. They're usually typically somewhere between five to 10 feet from right away, so.
As you know, I have a great concern about lines of visibility with signage.
Right, and we also, before we approve that, as you know, we generally do this administratively. Our biggest concern is the sight line or what we call the triangle, to make sure there's no obstructions. In this case, I think they generally, the location of the sign, they should be okay to prevent any obstructions, but obviously, we'll make sure there are no obstructions, whether this is supported at 13 feet or 15 feet or, for that matter, 10 feet.
Looks like the post is smaller, based on the pictures we've got. Probably half the size of the current monument sign.
That's correct. The post is a little, this is typical, as you know, there's been a rebranding of this medical company. This is, they're kind of prototypical sign, so they feel fairly strongly that they really want this sign. So the monument, the actual monument itself is a little different style than what we typically approve in the village, but something that we're looking for import from the village board, whether there's support for the actual parameters of 64 square feet and the height itself.
I support that, but, you know, whatever.
In our discussion sheets, the zoning board of appeals voted unanimously 5 to 0 to recommend approval. Their discussion, I have realized, is very positive. The one thing that always interests me is Route 59, especially early in the morning, late any time of the day. It's literally a high-traffic zone, because people start driving faster and faster once they get past one of the particular streets by the corner there. And what disturbs me, without a good sight of where you're going, you could easily go past the old sign, which I have done in the past, and I thought I knew where it was. I like the idea of looking at the particular sign, hoping it is said walk-in, open, or closed. You know what? When someone has a medical emergency or is distressed in one fashion or another, I feel very positive that they should have access to an area, something that they can actually see. And as trustee Fay specifically stated, the sight line is very important. A big sign's not going to block an entrance, is it? Hopefully.
No, we'll make sure it doesn't. Our biggest concern is obviously safety. Besides commercial viability, safety is a major concern.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
I move we authorize the variance of up to 15 feet in height and 64 feet in sign area at 15728 South Route 59.
We have a motion.
Turn down my motion first before you can make that one.
Nobody seconded it.
Nobody seconded it?
No.
We just thought it was horrible. All right.
I second trustee Fay's motion.
That motion's been made and seconded to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance granting approval for a sign variance to permit a ground monument sign of up to 15 feet in height and 64 square feet in sign area at 15728 South Route 59. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
No.
That motion carries 3-1. Next item on the agenda is amending the service charge for water and sewer. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3194, amending the service charge for waterworks and sewerage system of the Village Plainfield.
Thank you. Before we get a motion on this, I thought I'd give you an update. As you know, the Moody's upgraded our bond rating. Early last week, we also received word from Standard and Poor's that they also improved our bond rating to the second-highest possible rating we could receive. The bonds went out for sale today, and I'm happy to report that we will realize a $911,405 present value savings. Now, that's obviously spread over the life of the bond, but still nevertheless, a nice $900,000 savings for us going forward. In large part, it does have to do with the hard work that you have put in as a board in making the tough decisions over the past five years. We were rather strategic, as you know, to use our fund balances over previous years to catch up to when we got the great gift from the city of Chicago and the 25% rate increase, and then, of course, the subsequent three times 15% rate increases. This is the last year of the 15% rate increases, according to the city of Chicago and the materials that they provided. Their ordinance does indicate that future years' rate increases will be tied to the producer price index, which runs at about 3.5% to just under 4%. 3.6% last year was the rate on the producer price index. So that's how we were able to present to you the multi-year ordinance, as we discussed during the committee of the hall. With that, we ask for your consideration, and we hope to answer any questions.
Administrator Murphy, I have to ask you a question. You know, oftentimes, the work that you and your financial staff do through Ms. Plekem Management Services do an awful lot of work with the bond rating, et cetera, et cetera. Could, you know what? We have increased our bond rating to a very high level. You know, oftentimes, the public does not realize how low of a level you can go and how disastrous it can be financially for a community. Could you elaborate on that for a moment?
To an extent I can. I'll probably ask Ms. Plekem as well to assist me, only because I'll be very frank. I've had the pleasure of working for communities that have always had investment-grade bonds. But that being said, generally speaking, there are classes of bonds that rate from As down to Cs. If you're at a triple B negative rating with regard to Standard and Poor's, you really aren't a credible, market-ready bond. You pretty much have to rely on private placement bonds. Where we're at, with Standard and Poor's, we have the second-highest bond rating possible. What's really nice is that that's an extremely positive feat, especially in light of the challenges that are going on in Springfield. Even with the very high bond rating that we do have, there still is essentially a Springfield tax that hits the bond markets. So our rates aren't necessarily as good as you would see on a grade lower than ours being sold in Missouri, just as example. They would still actually see a slightly better bond rating, or not bond rating, but they would get a better rates when they go out on the marketplace because of that Springfield tax, as I call it. That being said, obviously, by moving up just one grade on this very sale, again, it was a $900,000 present value savings, the total real savings, cash savings, but of course, we present value things because of the timing of the money, is $1.195 million. So it's a rather substantive improvement that we recognize with this. I do also want to mention, and I'll probably steal Alan's thunder from a later presentation, but we've recently finished our review of our water losses on our system, and I know we've reported in the past that we've been at about 2%. However, if I remember correctly, the number is pretty darn close to 1% on this last study. So we're very fortunate in having not only great financial stewardship, but we also have great system stewardship, too. So we're a very fortunate organization to be able to present this to you.
If I can add one more example. When we initially looked at this current refunding for water and sewer back in November, we were estimating about $772,000 in present value savings. With the bond upgrades that we've had, and the market is pretty much a standard, stable market through the last couple of months, we've increased that savings to $911,000. So the rating increase does equal to some additional savings on our end. Additionally, just for budget purposes, this cost savings extrapolates to about $60,000 a year in debt service savings. So that's what we'll see through budget discussions as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
At this point, we're looking for a motion, please.
Some move? I said some move. I'm sorry.
A second, sorry. I'm daydreaming here.
The motion's been made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3194, amending the service charges for waterworks and sewerage system of the Village Plainfield. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Administrators' report?
I have one quick report. Today, the mayor received in the mail a letter from the ICC that we were given approvals for the installation of the pedestrian warning gates at 135th and the railroad tracks. With that as well, the grade crossing protection fund will also make a contribution of $50,000 toward the cost of the project. So congratulations to Alan and to the folks at Baxter and Woodman for helping us through this.
Management Services' report?
No report.
Engineers' report?
I wish you a happy holiday season.
Planning Department report?
No report.
Building Department report?
Yes, just the operations report for November, and we're shooting for 60 more permits for December. Do you have to answer any questions?
I just have a comment on your report. There's a number of houses being built. We've talked a lot about the price points on houses, and the range here is from $250,000 to $400,000. So there's quite a number of them being built, so that's an attractive range to be building on Plainfield, and these are going to be very attractive houses to boot, because they're following our single-family design standards as well. I think it's really nice progress, and you have increased again.
Thank you.
Dean, I have a question for you. I see a number of homes by K. Hovnanian, which I assume is in Fairfield Ridge.
Correct.
Do you know if those are, will be owner-occupied? Are they homes that have been purchased already?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent, thank you.
Whenever I see your report, and it's always interesting to look at the statistics, Mr. Marquez, on the second page, when you have the residential new construction, the board doesn't have to look, I'm just going to make a comment. I've noticed, I charted it for years. From 2009, we had 66 home, new permits. This year, already 140, and hopefully, we'll get 15 more in the month of December possibly, which will be another year of improvement. That is marvelous. I know an awful lot of it comes from the desirability of our community, but one thing that is always encouraging to me is to see the growth in the community. We're not stagnant. We're, as Trustee Lamb has stated, we have good-quality homes. Everything is moving in a very positive fashion, and when you see that, it just shows the sign of improvement, the health of our environment, the health of our economy in the Plainfield area, and people want to live here, and that's really positive. Thank you for reporting that.
Public Works' report?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for the positive comments, and if you get the opportunity to congratulate Mr. Stafko and his crew regarding the 1% water loss. I said that at 2%, that it doesn't get any better than this. Mark has proven me wrong again, and it is just an outstanding achievement, but it does save all of the ratepayers and all of our residents' money when the crew saves water that way. So, it is an important thing, but thank you for your support, and thank you for that comment, too, as well. Want to move on to a really exciting project, and the board has, has looked at this, we've talked about this. We've been working with IDOT for probably a little over two years on the design itself, and we're glad to report that we're finally near the point that it's going to go out to bid. We did have a meeting with, with the head of the Schaumburg office, John Fortman, about two weeks ago. We talked about the project, we talked about some of Plainfield's other traffic challenges out there and things that we're concerned about, but we did spend some time on this project, too, as well. And I'm happy to report and highlight some of the things that the Route 30 reconstruction will bring the village. We just talked about the Route 30 TIF earlier, but specifically for the village, and we have it on the bullet points up here on the slide as well for the people in the audience, it will, it meets all the criteria for the items that are within the village's strategic plan. And, first of all, reducing traffic ingestion by expanding and adding lanes, adding turn lanes, improving traffic signals, and improving traffic safety is top of the list with the board as far as the policies or strategic plan is concerned. Also, providing new bike path and sidewalk access. Not only will there be a new 10-foot-wide multi-use path on the west side of Route 30, there will also be a sidewalk on the other side, on the east side, and at each location, each intersection, there will be crossings with crossing lights, with countdown timers, with all those things that make the community more walkable, and that's included as, as part of this project as well. Upgrading some of the old water and sewer utilities, we have some water and sewer lines that are over 80, 90 years old in this area. There's a little over 1,000 feet of water and/or sewer lines that will be replaced as part of this work. Also included in that, there will be an extension of the water and sewer lines underneath Route 30 to the Boulevard's project that's currently vacant, and it's the old truck stop property, and this will help encourage the redevelopment of this site. Now, to make this work as well, the lift station, it's one of the largest wastewater pumping stations that we have that's directly adjacent to the Lillikash, needs to be upgraded in size and also in equipment. That will occur as part of this project and add additional capacity for that property. It also serves Winding Creek and Arbor Creek, so it's important, it's right at that point, it's about 20 years old, it's at that point where the equipment needs to be replaced anyway. It's a benefit that we'll be able to do this and upgrade the station to take on the new capacity at the same time, too, as well. So, we wanted to bring those out as, as important aspects within this project. You can see a breakdown of the cost. I've summarized the costs on the bottom. In essence, the total cost for the project is estimated at $32 million, $32.9 million. The federal government is to pay $25.6 million, the state $6.1 million. The village's proportionate share is a little over $1 million, and then the other entities have smaller, smaller amounts in there. But keep in mind that this is Plainfield's corridor, and I say that being a long-term employee here and remembering back to some of the boundary discussions from years and years ago. 20 years ago, this was a very important corridor, and there was a reason why we extended the water and sewer lines down into this area at that time. So, I'm pleased, our proportionate share is higher, but understandably, there's some older utilities that need to be replaced, there's some upgrades that we want out there. We pay 20% of the bike path and sidewalk. That means the federal government and the state, they pay the other 80%, which is a half-million-dollar cost there, too, as well. So, that is the important parts of the agreement itself, and you can see a breakdown within Exhibit A that shows the cost sharing for each one of the items. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any, any questions related to the project, technical questions or other questions related to the project, but the agreement is first, and then after that are the standard ordinances that the state requires to restrict parking and other normal things as part of this project. I guess I'll end it on this, the state is planning to have this out to bid in January. It's an 18-month completion cycle for the project. I'm going to guess it's going to be two years, so there is going to be some heavy lifting that'll go on to get this project completed, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it'll create a really nice improvement for that corridor and spur some new development down in that area as well. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alan, you said it's going out to bid in January. Do you have a approximate starting time?
The, the spring would be a good target, although, I will tell you, the water and sewer utilities will be the first items that the contractor will tackle. Several utility locations, relocations have already been made by the other entities. ComEd still has some work to do out there, too, as well. So, utilities will be first, and then it'll be on to the storm sewer and then the road work.
Have we, have we talked with ComEd at all about potentially burying lines?
We did. It makes it difficult with the substation in that, that location, that there's just such a high voltage and amperage in that area, that the costs were well over $5 million to do just a small portion of the work. So, ComEd, at this point, they're moving the utilities back. There's, we could always tackle that in the future, they'll be in their own easement outside of the right-of-way, but it's something that we couldn't fiscally tackle in our budget this year.
Thank you.
It's a pretty wet area, anyway, so burying is probably not really be great for appearances, but functionally, it's had its complications. I have a couple minor questions for clarification. Number 18, the village agrees to assume responsibility for the reconstruction and maintenance of the sidewalk or path and so on. Reconstruction means what in this case?
It's, once it's constructed, that any of the maintenance that's needed for the path is the village's responsibility. This is the state's standard language. We actually have the same language in Route 59, that the sidewalk is our sidewalk. We have the permission for it to be in the right-of-way, state's right-of-way, but it is our responsibility to maintain it, and that's standard throughout all of them.
That's fine, because you said state, and it's going to take 20, 80% or something like that, so I just want to make sure they're building it for that, and then we'll take care of it. I have no issue with that. The other two things are just minor points, but it looks like we're going to have to put up a half-million as soon as that contract is signed. We're prepared to do that?
That's correct. We budgeted the funds within the, within this year's budget, anticipating that this project would move even a little faster, so we have budgeted the funds in this year's budget, and we did make, we did bring that in as far as, as our discussions, calculations for next year's budget as well, so make sure we don't get a surprise.
The other one, just for clarification for other people looking at it, the costs may not be exactly what we project. Interestingly, now, I was going to say, are they going to break it down by the 25 million and the 1 million? Well, the answer is no. You're breaking it down by each of the individual little projects, and we get a piece of some of those projects. So, we may end up paying more for minor pieces of the project, so that's okay, too. It's just, we need to recognize that, I'm not sure, because it's not exactly a fixed amount that we're paying. It may be adjusted some, and hopefully, it won't go down, I don't think, but hopefully, the adjustment upwards will be minor.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Our experience with Route 59 is actually, there were two separate projects, but IDOT had the higher estimate of the bids of the two different contractors. So, at the end of the day, when it, the books were trued up, it was very, very close.
Great.
Can't remember, it's been enough years, I can't remember exactly, but they were, they were very close.
Yeah, at that time, though, the contractors were a bit more competitive than they are now. We're starting to see thumbs come in above our estimates, so I wouldn't be surprised if we'll see some subtle increases here and there, but we recognize, oh, we handle them when they occur, so. Good project, that.
I move we authorize the village president to execute an agreement with the state of Illinois, number JN-114-013, that is required to facilitate the Illinois Department of Transportation's U.S. Route 30 Improvement Project.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee?
Excuse me. Mayor, Madam Clerk, I just want to make a comment and be, anyway, long story. I was just thinking about this particular project. In our, in our discussion, our pages of discussion, they mentioned the Boulevard property. It almost seems to have fallen on the back burner for, to a degree, but this is the perfect illustration. Oftentimes, people will criticize, saying, what are you doing something when there's nothing going on? It looks like a devastated area. You know what? Get prepared for the future. You have to be prepared for the future. If someone wants to develop that Boulevard property, and there's a very good possibility, it will be done in the near future. I'm, I'm not saying anything very specific right now, but that property is really valuable, it's connected with the village of Plainfield. We have to have access, we have to provide services to that particular area and that entire corridor, and the money spent today will be well-served in the very near future. And so, I definitely support this, and I know you'll ask Madam Clerk now for a vote.
The motion was made and seconded to authorize the village president to execute an agreement with the state of Illinois for the U.S. Route 30 Improvement Project. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance, or resolution number 1695 appropriating the sum of $1,49,033, or so much thereof as may be necessary from any money now or herein after allotted to the village to pay its share of the cost of this improvement as provided in the agreement.
Second.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3195 restricting parking along U.S. Route 30.
That is my motion.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3196 prohibiting the discharge of sanitary and industrial waste into any storm sewer or drainage facility constructed as part of the U.S. Route 30 Improvement Project. So moved?
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3197 prohibiting encroachments within the state of Illinois right-of-way along Route 30.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you for your support. We'll keep the board apprised of the progress related to the project, but again, and we'll keep the public apprised as to what's going on with the project, because there will be some traffic congestion along during construction, but we're, we're looking forward to the completion of it, that's for sure. The last item that I have is related to equipment replacement. We currently have an aging fleet, and we talked about that a little bit at last budget discussion, and we'll talk about it again when we talk about the street division as far as budget is concerned. Pat Miller has collected a, actually, a proposal through Winnebago County. They did go for a bid through the county. It is common for other municipalities to piggyback on other bids, that we do this through the suburban purchasing co-op. The Winnebago County did purchase several vehicles at a discounted rate through this bid, but as you'll see within the letter and the documents, that they allow other municipalities, entities within Illinois to piggyback along on this bid and receive the same discount, too, as well. This truck is an item that, in the past, we haven't truly had a quote-unquote chipper box on the truck. When we first started in with EAB and we acquired a chipper, we took one of the snowplow trucks and it converted them to a chipper truck, and the box is significantly smaller. It's only eight foot deep. This is actually 14 feet deep, so it reduces the amount of trips that the employees have to make to return and, and dump the chips themselves. So, it really does improve efficiency. So, there, there are two, two parts to this. One, we're helping retire some of our aging fleet, which helps benefit long-term as far as maintenance is concerned, and then also, this piece of equipment is actually designed to carry a chipper, to carry the amount of chips to as well, and it's designed for this purpose, and it really is a great price for this piece of equipment, too, as well. So, staff would recommend approval of the purchase of this vehicle.
That is my motion.
Second. Oh, one question, Alan, though. What's, what's the maximum diameter trunk that'll go through that chipper?
Yeah, it's 14 inches in diameter, and that, that's typical for, that's about our larger, you know, ash trees, so that hasn't been an issue. The trunks can be cut in half and actually pushed through the chipper, too, as well, but the, the chipper's in, in very good condition. We recently had it rebuilt, and it's actually in very good condition.
This is comparable to what the people who do it for a business on a route every day, that's their size truck, as I recall. The chipper's very, is comparable to the?
That's correct.
Really professional types, okay. Thank you.
Alan, this is budgeted under Capital Improvement Fund?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just one other question. The unit that it's replacing will be?
Will be retired. The, the unit is, was purchased in 1994, so it, it's, it's 20 years old, and it is an older international truck that we're replacing.
Maybe Pat Miller would like to take it home.
We, we, we will have another option in the future. I can hear Pat behind me now. We will keep the board apprised and then bring that back and send it to auction in the spring.
Are there any other comments or questions?
My last comment was an attempt at humor.
Thank you.
Motion was made and seconded to authorize the purchase of one 2015 Peterbilt chipper truck and body from JX Financial, Inc., at a total cost of $107,636.84. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you. That's all, Alan.
Police Chiefs' report?
Thank you. The first item I have tonight is a request for consideration to adopt the updated Will County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. As you recall, back in 2008, the village adopted the initial, or the original document that was put together with assistance from the Will County Emergency Management Agency and other jurisdictions in Will County, and this document basically identifies hazards throughout the county, but also specific hazards that we may face here in Plainfield, from severe weather to things that we don't experience on a regular basis, such as earthquakes and, and things like that. What this plan does is identify problems that we may face and also remedies that we potentially could utilize to address those type of problems. As I mentioned, the, this is a updated version of the original plan, and I am seeking, there is one mistake in the agenda, it does say ordinance, it would be in the form of a resolution for the village board to adopt the updated Will County All-Hazard Mitigate, All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. The actual document itself was not attached to the packet, because it is several hundred pages long, but it is available on the website. pages long, but it is available on the website.
I move we adopt ordinance, or resolution number 1696, approving and authorizing adoption of the Will County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
I'll make a couple of comments, though. Trustee Fay has many, many times has said that we study ourselves to death, and then we ignore them. This is an outstanding document, if you start, you scan through it, I mean, 438 pages is a lot to go through. I scanned through quite a bit of it, it's very well-done, very informative, very accurate. The thing that it identifies, though, is our number-one problem is flooding, and that is a function of planning and the Will County Stormwater Committee and, you know, stuff that we do too. And it properly describes the fact that things have changed over the years. They have a table on page, shoe does one or whatever, I didn't remove my glasses, so anyway, it has a table, and it shows there are significant floods, 96, 97. Yeah, it helps a little bit. Well, no, I'm talking about year, 96, 90, or 2007, 2008, 2013, these were major floods at DuPage River. And one of the things they talk about in this document is protect and secure life and property, which is mitigation. We're woefully lacking in mitigation on floods. We've had floods, and, you know, we suffer through them, and, you know, the paper talks about, well, we draw the flood insurance maps. Turn out the people who are most susceptible to flooding don't get the insurance. They're unhappy that they flood, so they want, you know, they want miracles. So, I'd suggest that we, you know, try to put together a real active focus on mitigating flood, at least in Plainfield, and with cooperation on Will County Stormwater, and Alan's been part of that, Doug's probably part of it now too, so, but anyway, we should get active in mitigation because we don't need to continue to suffer as much as we have. There's some things we can correct, protect life and property, I suggest we get action-oriented strategic plan on flood mitigation, if you will.
Absolutely, and some of the things we've worked on specifically related to flooding, working with the United States Geological Service, they actually added, over the last several years, added some additional monitoring devices along the river to help us give a better reading, a more accurate reading as far as how high the river has come and passed floods, and it gives us a better gauge also, when it reaches a certain level, what areas are going to be impacted and things like that. So, yes, we do continue working that in that way.
Yeah, those are definitely real improvements, and we get more and more experience as time goes on. One of the things the document talks about is also FEMA grants for mitigation. We pursue grants from the government in a lot of different places. FEMA granted funds to take out seven houses along the DuPage, if I remember it, seven, I think. And there's obviously more money available if we go after it, so I suggest we be as aggressive in this area as we are in some of the other areas. Government money's available? Let's use it. We can make, protect life and property in Plainfield if we do that, so. So much for my soapbox, but anyway.
No other questions on that? The other item I have tonight is the operations report for November for the police department. One item I would just like to bring your attention on page, what page is that? Guess my eyes are going to page nine, I believe, the yearly dispatch comparison by hour. Because of a changeover in our CAD system early in the month, the data, as you'll see, is really not consistent with the rest of the timeframe, so that was just a glitch or a problem that we ran into when we switched over from one data recovery system to another at the beginning of the month. But if anybody has any questions on the operations report for November, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just out of curiosity, the picture, this is the library parking lot.
That's correct.
It's not even snowy or icy. How did that happen?
You'd be surprised at the way some of the accidents happen in this town.
I would be. I'm surprised, look at the picture, yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Attorneys' report?
Thank you. As you're aware, under the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the mayor and board are required to review the closed session minutes at least twice a year, and I've, as has been our custom, reviewed them and would recommend that the closed session minutes from July 21st, 2014 be disclosed, as there's no longer a reason for those remaining confidential, and the remaining minutes remain confidential as there is a need for that. That is my motion.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded to release the executive session minutes of July 21st, 2014, and to keep the remaining minutes confidential. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Reminders?
Reminders, December 16th is the next Planning Commission meeting, December 22nd, Committee of the whole has been canceled. December 24th and 25th offices will be closed, as well as January 1st. January 5th will be our next village board meeting, and for those would like to hear, happy holidays, happy holidays. For those that would like to hear, merry Christmas, merry Christmas.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.